9th Street, and there's a lot of R4 zoning in the area. And then there are duplex uses within the area against scattered throughout the area. And then you look at the zoning viewer based on the addresses. There does appear to be some multi-unit buildings in the area where the addresses are, you know, have a street number and, you know, A through D or something like that.
These actually houses that have been converted into multi?
Over the years, yes.
And you've got a rendering, I think of, can you put that back up? Just you had it up briefly and then you took it down.
Commissioner, I have a question.
Chair.
I'm sorry.
I have a question for the applicant. Have you made time to meet with the residents about your plans to present?
So we put our sign up as so that they have to call planning. And then when they had left a number, I did reach out. They, I was given two numbers by Monty and I called both of them and left a message. Of course, you know, we, there's still a sign up there today that the proposed change has been made or being their proposed changes and that they can call planning and get information on that. But I never put a rendering like this on site.
So no, no one contacted you from the neighborhood?
Not, not, I have a couple of projects going, but not on this one. I don't think I was contacted by anybody personally.
Let me go ahead and see what he wants to do first. Yeah, for rendering to be shown.
The two homes that are on 616th Street will probably be around 580 square feet living space, not including the porches. The six, two stories can be somewhere closer to 1,000 square feet. The two that are in the alley could actually potentially have garages that are, so maybe like a single car garage or something like that. But I know like we're showing that there are 10, you know, there's a potential for 10 parking spots back there. But I mean, really, the idea is like, we have neighbors that ride scooters to work, that ride bikes to work. Like we're just trying to make a small investment and nudge toward a different type model of development. That's not auto centric.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, it will just real quick. Commissioners, any other commissioners have any questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Hanson, is it? Okay, yeah, if you can approach the mic pretty quickly. Can you approach the mic so we can hear you? Yeah, want to make sure everyone out in television land can hear you. You might get a Hollywood, you might get a Hollywood offer.
Hey, I just wanted to make this one comment. He talked about contact. We were here on July the 8th and gave up three hours to find out it was postponed. So I feel like we did our part of our part to do that. And I don't do business on the telephone.
I appreciate it.
I want to talk to you.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments? I know this is one that's got some, some concerns, so we want to make sure that we give everyone a chance to make comments. Yeah, if you, if you'd like to go ahead and approach the mic, please.
Yes, this approved this. I've been there, I'm retired military and that's my home. I do not want.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I got, I'm not gonna say that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. If you can be very quick and brief, yeah, if you've got some new information. Okay, quickly, yeah, if you approach the mic quickly.
I only see portable buildings there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, any other comments, commissioners, staff? All right, here and done. We're at a point for a motion for a vote.
I move that we approve file number Z-9595 together with all staff comments and conditions, including the recommendation of approval.
Here we have a motion, how about a second?
Second.
Motion and second, roll call vote.
Craig Barry?
Aye.
Aye. Eric Brooks?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Scott Hamilton?
Aye.
Todd Hart?
Aye.
Martin Haynes?
Aye.
Bobby Ramon?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Michael Vickers?
Aye.
Bobby Vogel?
Aye.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, I would encourage the developer to spend some time with your new neighbors. I think what you're doing is, is it's, it's taking a step out there. But I think this is the type thing where you'd want to work well with your neighbors.
Absolutely, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item we have, I think is item number five, is it?
Correct.
Okay, item number five.
Item number five, file number Z-9600. This is a Jackson daycare family home special use permit located at 6824 Fairfield Drive.
Angela Jackson.
The property at 6824 Fairfield Drive is located at the northeast corner of Fairfield and Daly Drive. All surrounding properties are zoned R2, single-family residential. A non-conforming warehouse structure is located immediately to the north with clinical uses, post office, community center, and police substation further north and northeast. The applicant requests a special use permit to operate a daycare family home at this location. The applicant proposes to care for up to 10 children with hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. Daycare will be closed on state and federal holidays. In addition to the applicant and resident who is Angela Jackson, Ms. Jackson's mother, Ms. Hatton, will be an additional caregiver who will report to the site on a daily or as needed basis. The applicant's home is a one-story brick and frame structure, is typical of those in the area. The rear yard is fenced and should provide a safe play area for the proposed daycare family home use. There's a one-car wide driveway from Fairfield Drive with parking for three vehicles, including the carport. The existing driveway on the site will need to be reserved for drop off and pickup of children. There is an existing gravel area on the west side of the driveway and carport area. This area has been used for parking for over 30 years. If the applicant proposes to use the gravel area for her and her mother to park on, the area will need to be upgraded to a low-impact development standard with borders and access only from the existing driveway. The other option would be that the applicant could widen the existing driveway to a two-car width. The principal use of the property will remain single-family residential. No signage beyond that allowed in single-family zones will be permitted. The applicant submitted a copy of the bill of assurance for this neighborhood, which was recorded in 1964 and appears to be in effect. Bill of assurance contains the following language. No lot shall be used except for residential purposes. No building shall be erected, altered, placed, or permitted to remain on this. Lot other than one single-family dwelling not to exceed two and a half stories in height and a private garage for not more than two cars. Section 3654 E3 of the city code establishes the guidelines for daycare family homes. You were provided that in the ordinance, I'll not go over that unless you have any questions. Special use permits are not transferable in any manner. They cannot be transferred to owner to owner, location to location, or use to use. So therefore, if approved, it would be only for Ms. Jackson and her proposed daycare family home. The staff's knowledge there are no outstanding issues associated with this application. Staff feels a proposed daycare family home with this location will have no adverse impact on the general area. Based on an area survey conducted by staff, there are no permitted or licensed daycare family homes or daycare centers within 300 feet of the site. And Little Rock Fire Marshal has inspected the site and approved use of the residence as a daycare family home. With respect to the area survey staff conducted, on the maps, there does show that there was an approved daycare family home within a block of this area on Fairfield a number of years ago. Staff did inspect that property and that daycare family home is no longer in operation. Staff does recommend approval of a special use permit application to allow daycare family home at 6824 Fairfield Drive, subject to the following conditions. Compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Compliance with the site and location criteria in section 3654 E3. There's to be no signage beyond that permitted in single-family zones. And outdoor activities, including the playground use, are limited to daylight hours.
Okay, the applicant can approach the podium and state your name.
My name is Angela Jackson.
Okay, Ms. Jackson, if you want, you can share with us a little bit about your proposed project. Or we have a couple of cards where people want to make comments in opposition. And you certainly are welcome to come back after they present their, their comments.
Are they gonna go ahead and present?
If, if that's okay, if that, okay. And then, yeah, you can certainly come back and address what they state. Okay, all right, I've got two cards for item number five. The first one, I just have the name of O'Neal. Approach the podium and state your name.
My name is Tashan O'Neal, President Chico Neighborhood Association. Good afternoon, board. I would like to let you guys know that I appreciate you guys being here today with the pandemic. I appreciate everyone that took the time to come out. I stand here in opposition of this item. If you don't already have in front of you, there should be a letter of opposition from myself. If you don't have it, it was sent in last week. Also, you should have a letter of opposition brought in today from Southwest United, progress, Southwest, excuse me, Southwest United for Progress. Pam Adcock, president, sent in a letter for opposition today. And also, there is a neighbor in the 7,000 block, which is just shy of the 200 feet in opposition that I have a letter for that I presented today. The reasons that we are opposing this is for numerous of reasons. The first reason we'd like to mention is the size of the home. I wasn't privy to the first few moments, but from what I could just gather on information online, it's a 900 square foot home and it's going to be 10 children there with adults. That seems like a kind of small home to have that type of a daycare in. It's also the location, it's a corner home, which means the people have to park along the street. It's also going to mean they're going to have to back up when they're dropping and bringing their kids off. Also, another concern in the neighborhood was the traffic. And again, that's an intersection there. And then the noise, as you were saying about the daylight hours of playtime. We would like to say in the community that we do understand that during these times, people are getting creative with ways to make money. We understand and respect that, just not in this neighborhood and not in this home. We also would like to say that single-home family neighborhoods are the backbone of communities. We would like to always have community over capitalism. Again, we respect the applicant, but because of the reasons that we've noted before and the opposition from Southwest United for Progress and also the residents in the area that did run shy of that 700, we do oppose for those following reasons and hope to respect our opinion and do the same.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your comments. Let's see, next card I have is Troy Lahey. Farmer Planning Commissioner, Ms. Lahey, how you doing?
I'm doing all right.
All right, good to see you.
See who's talking to everybody, the mask kept them so far away. I'm Troy Lahey and I'm Vice President of Southwest Little Rock United for Progress. And I'm backing up the letter that Pam Adcock has written. And she's not able to do any traveling. And this is a small home, as Mrs. O'Neal has pointed out to you. And if I remember correctly, all these childcare family homes, the master bedroom is off limits for the children. They can't, you can't go in and use the master bedroom as part of the facility. That home is located on Fairfield and Daly Drive. And I know most of you are not familiar with Fairfield, but it is a cut through from Chico, the Gower Springs, or cut through from Chico to Daly Drive, then up to Baseline. If you're familiar with traffic in that area, Chico and, Chico and Baseline, that area, and there's one of the highest traffic accidents part in the city. And I don't feel like it'd be very safe for young children on this lot of people backing in and out. And that's, that's all the comments I have. I don't know, Mr. Moore stole part of my propaganda. I was going to point out that daycare across the whole state from them, but I understand they're going out of business. Thanks a lot, Mr. Moore. That's all I have, any questions, gentlemen? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lahey. Okay, if the applicant would like to reapproach the podium and bear with us, your thoughts or address any of the comments from the opposition?
Okay, so the purpose of is not to think profit off of money. I work for the Vision Children Family Service, I'm a state employee. With that being said, due to the pandemic, we have a lot of children coming in. We actually have more children coming in than we do workers. I personally, along with other colleagues, have set babysitting children due to overwhelming in daycares. Secondly, due to the pandemic, after surveying my neighborhood, people that's right next to me, it was like I would be more comfortable with a smaller setting due to the pandemic. But that was the purpose of me deciding to do something different, being employed in this department where I'm seeing children coming into foster care in great numbers. Secondly, to address the gentleman that spoke second, any part of that home, once that licensed specialist come out, can be used. As long as it's approved, it can be used for some space of children. Secondly, I heard the concerns, ten kids in the home. Again, I can have up to 10 children. So with that being said, parking was a concern. I don't know if they heard what was mentioned earlier in regards to it's designated parking for parents to come. Therefore, it shouldn't be an issue. Due to the fact that neighborhood that I'm in, I do have a lot of parents that's running something like that in the neighborhood. A lot of parents are catching the bus, therefore they can walk the kids in. So in my closing, I think it'd be good for my neighborhood. I think it'd be good due to the pandemic, the numbers are increasing. Where I'm seeing a lot of children be pulled out of different centers and different, different daycare. Also see the increase of kids having to go due to the parents having to go to work. Again, as I reiterated and stated, I'm one that's sitting at my job that are going out doing other things. I'm having to sit with these children because they have nowhere to go until we can find places. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any comments, questions, or thoughts about this particular item?
I have a couple of questions. You are the, you are the daughter of the owner of the property, is that correct? Do you live there full-time or no? You do, so you and your mother live there full-time? She does not.
I'm the only one residing at home.
Okay, great, thank you.
Question, have you applied for your license with the state yet?
Yes, I, I, well, I'm gonna say this, I've been approved of to send children. Not apply until the zoning has approved.
Okay.
I've done everything else.
There's a question for staff. The bill of assurance, the first sentence says, "The lot shall not be used except for residential purposes." I, I take it that we've interpreted that to mean that so long as the, well, the ordinance that you cite right after that says that a daycare family home may be located only in a single-family home occupied by the caregiver, in which is the full-time residence of the caregiver. So how are we sort of, you know, making those two reconcile with each other?
When it, when it comes to bill of assurances, the commission can look to them for, I'd say some guidance, but what, you cannot be directed by them. If there is an issue, bill of assurance, that's a private action, the city does not get involved in it. So you can consider it, but it should not be your overwhelming decision on whether you approve or deny this project.
I got it.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Mr. Chair, if I might, to follow, to kind of follow up on that, Vice Chair. The intent of a special use permit in, for a daycare family home is that the principal use of the property is the single-family home. And then the daycare use is just an ancillary use of the property, which is real similar to, the city does have provisions, what's called home occupation license for people to operate businesses from their homes. And there are literally hundreds of single-family homes across the city that operate businesses under certain criteria from their homes. And the intent is that the appearance of the single-family home be maintained and that it be, the principal use be single-family, and these uses are just ancillary.
Mr. Chair, I, I just have one comment on this because I've, I've been around and voted for these special use permits for daycares for a long time and, and I'm sure this proprietor is very good. I just, I just have a health and safety concern about this being on the corner with the traffic, you know, I, I drove out there and I just have a, have a concern about the, the traffic safety for the children and, and the neighbors on that. Thank you.
Commissioner, I have a question to the applicant. What are the age groups? What are the ages that you will be housing at your, in your daycare?
The ages I'll be housing is going to be infants to two and a half.
Infants to two and a half. Again, I, I agree with Commissioner Barry on the safety concern with that traffic coming down through that neighborhood. I too am familiar with that area. And there is a lot of traffic that comes through there, a lot of speeding that comes through there. Not sure if you're, you're going to have a gate or of some sort, a way you to protect the children. But as, as for now, for right now, that would be my concern with that.
So when you say gate, I have a private fence around the back. What do you mean a gate to protect the children?
On the front.
So my children won't be in the front at all unless?
When children are getting in and out of the car? Like how will they? Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, one.
No, go ahead.
I have a carport and the thing was, this is, this is my.
I can't hear you, can you?
Yeah, if you can speak into the mic.
Take for the, so my take for the parking, because I know, you know, I know the people that had daycares and the ones that he was talking about that has closed down, we were on the same street, they were my neighbors. I said all that to say, I have a lot of parking on the side of my home, which is where I will park my vehicles. And my mom, she's going to be my volunteer helper when she come. Therefore, I have a concrete slab, a carport where my parents will come and drop the kids off. The kids are going to go through the side door, we're not going to even use the front door. They'll be picked up at the side door and dropped off at the side door. So I'm not understanding why a fence would be needed when they'll be pulling up under the carport or be pulling on their concrete slab, bringing them to the side of my home. We're not using the front door as an entrance for the kids to be dropped off and picked up.
No, I wasn't saying that a fence is needed. I was just asking for the safety when they, when they get in and out their vehicles. What is the game plan for them to be safe from being in the street? Because if you had a fence around the front, that would be a lot easier for them to just go into that gate and then, or that fenced-in area. I'm not saying that you should have a fence, that was just a concern that I was bringing up.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
I also have another question. Were you able to meet with your neighbors and the neighborhood association?
I was, I was able to meet with all of my neighbors that stays within, just say, every last one of them was approved. Matter of fact, I had about 10 that volunteered to come today. And I told them, no, it's okay, because all of my retired, they're for it. My mother's owned this home for over 20, 30 years, so therefore I was raised in the neighborhood. These are the same people that I see every day. These are the people that, the people that spoke against it are the people that come through. I spoke, I spoke to the people that stays and reside on the street that will deal with these concerns that these people have. And the thing is, I told them, no, you know, they've, they're retired, I, I'll, I'll just let you know how things are going. So yes, I've spoke with everyone just about on my street that will be directly involved in my transition.
Thank you.
Chair, I have another question.
Okay, certainly.
I've been, what are the rules for number of adults per child for the age group that you suggested, which was infant to two and a half, I believe?
Yeah, so infant to two and a half, it's, it's like six to one for an infant. The same with the toddler. Again, I'm not going to have four children because I cannot. I've already been approved to have up to 10. However, I'm going to do what's going to accommodate the space there.
10 you can have with two adults, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And to reiterate, you've addressed the safety concerns by having the parents to pull on your property and be, exit the vehicle, not in the street, but on your property.
That's right.
Got a question for staff. Staff, you guys voted to approve this, right?
We, we support the.
We support it. And, and you guys have already went into the detail of parking and safety and all that stuff. But you guys don't ask those questions?
Well, we do, we do look at that. The ordinance does require that all drop off and pickup of children be done on the site and that all vehicles related to this property be parked on-site. No on-street parking, no drop off and pickup on the street. So it's all got to be done on-site.
Okay.
And as far as the safety issue, if you will, what in our staff report, which basically flows right into our recommendation with conditions, we want to see all access be from Fairfield, not the, not Daly Drive on the side. So it's going to be up to Ms. Jackson to figure out which option she, she wants to use. She's got two, three options. One would be to widen the driveway to a two-car width. One would be to enhance and bring the gravel area up to code, which would include bordering the gravel area and only accessing that area from the main driveway. The gravel area from the main driveway. So we, we've looked at those issues and we're comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay, hearing no additional comments. I'll accept the motion for vote.
I move that we approve file number Z-9600 together with all staff comments and conditions.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second, roll call vote.
Craig Barry?
No.
Earl Benton?
Yes.
Derek Brooks?
No.
Scott Hamilton?
Yes.
Todd Hart?
Yes.
Martin Haynes?
Yes.
Robin Ramon?
Yes.
Diana Thomas?
Yes.
Michael Vickers?
Yes.
Yes.
Bobby Vogel?
No.
Mr. Chair, motion passes, seven yes, three noes.
Okay, thank you, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have is item number two. And get a read of this particular request.
Item number two is the Crystal Valley Trails preliminary plat, file number S-1898, located at 1544 Crystal Valley Road. The applicant proposes to subdivide this 168.9 acres of property into 551 lots and nine tracks for single-family residential development. The property is zoned R2, single-family, is located on the north side of Crystal Valley Road at Colonel Miller Road. Property is located outside the city limits and within the city's extraterritorial zoning and subdivision jurisdiction. The applicant does propose to annex the property prior to its development. The majority of the property is undeveloped and wooded with the varying, with varying degrees of slope. One single-family residence is located within the south half of the overall property. Overhead power lines run north-south along the east property boundary. The applicant proposes an average lot size of 50 feet by 120 feet or 6,000 square feet. And the applicant proposes to develop the subdivision in seven phases. Colonel Miller Road, a collector's street, will extend to the north through this proposed subdivision. The overall subdivision will include approximately 18,200 linear feet of new streets. Traffic calming devices will be required on five or six of the north-south streets within this subdivision. The applicant is currently working with engineering division staff to determine which traffic calming device or devices will be acceptable to our, all parties. And this, the specific traffic calming devices to be used will be determined by staff prior to development of phase one. The applicant proposes to construct the required street improvements to Crystal Valley Road in two phases. Phase one will include approximately 1,200 linear feet of roadway and will be constructed with phase one development. Phase two of the street improvements will be, will include over 700 linear feet and be constructed with phase five of the. be constructed with Phase Five of the proposed subdivision development. Staff supports this phase development plan. The applicant proposes to locate mail kiosks within tracks A, E, and I with vehicular and pedestrian access to the kiosks. The mailbox kiosk locations must be constructed in conformance with U.S. Postal Service and City of Little Rock design standards and be ADA accessible. The applicant is requesting an advanced grading variance with the proposed preliminary plat. The applicant is requesting to advance grade Phase One, in which will be grade the areas of the lots with the grading of the infrastructure, and advance grade one phase ahead of each phase, which is where the infrastructure is being developed. And staff does support that advanced grading plan and the variance. The staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues associated with this preliminary plat request. The applicant's done a good job in addressing issues raised by staff during staff's review of the plat. The applicant is requesting no variances from the subdivision ordinance requirements. Staff recommends approval of the proposed plat and associated advanced grading variance subject to comply with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Staff also requires that the property be annexed prior to any permits being issued for site development. Also, staff would request that the commission take two votes on this application, one vote on the plat itself, and a separate vote for the advanced grading variance.
Okay, and would those votes need to be sequential? Plat first and then grading? Plat first and then grading?
That would be correct.
Okay, okay, great. And just a reminder, it's 20 minutes per side, right? Okay, all right, so we've got item number two.
Before we continue this, I just have a couple of questions to ask the attorney and staff. As Monty just read, did our understanding from that reading that there are no variances with this application?
Chair, the way I would like to proceed with that question, I have a number of questions for staff, if you'd give me a little leeway, and then I wanted to establish based upon those questions whether or not this meets the Richardson case.
Okay.
If it does, I would like to give the precedence of that case.
Yep.
So that we can establish for the record in case this goes to court.
Absolutely, okay. Certainly take the floor.
Bonnie, will you be able to answer the preliminary plat questions that I have? Okay. Have you reviewed the preliminary plat for height regulations?
For?
Height regulations?
Height regulations?
Yes. They can't exceed, in R2, they can't exceed 25 feet. Or, excuse me, the height of 35 feet. Have you made that determination?
The building, building height's not, does not come into play with preliminary plats.
No, but it's part of R2, and this is an R2 zone.
Correct. So when each lot develops, each lot will have to adhere to the 35-foot height requirement.
All right, front yard setback, you looked at those?
Same, same. The front yard setbacks do comply. There are planted building lines.
Okay, lot area regulations that meets those requirements?
Correct.
Okay. Was a stormwater drainage analysis done?
I believe it was. I would have to defer to the Engineering Division to answer that specific question.
Mike, the reason why I asked that question is, and I pass this out to commissioners, preliminary plat, one of the requirements under, let's see. Under Section 3189 preliminary plat, one of the requirements is that a stormwater drainage preliminary analysis showing drainage data shall be provided. Is that provided?
We have a preliminary plan showing the preliminary drainage, the sketch grading plan that's customarily submitted along with the subdivision information.
Do you have any issues with that?
We have no issues with it right now. However, there is an additional, more detailed stormwater and grading plan that will come in with the first permit.
But you, but you're satisfied that that stormwater?
I'm satisfied that all of us.
Meets with preliminary plat requirements?
I'm satisfied that all the preliminary information has been provided.
Chair, based upon the answers that staff provided, I do feel that this falls under Richardson. Under Richardson, once the City Planning Commission has exercised its authority to draft legislation regarding subdivision development, it's bound by those regulations, and they must administer them. If you make any decision such as a denial, it would be considered to be arbitrary. And the reason for that, and I know the public's upset with that, that ruling, because it provides stability in our planning process so that developers know what the minimum requirements are when they go to develop a project. So you can, I do recommend we hear the public so that we can provide them with due process, but I would also like the public to understand that we are bound by both state law and by the Arkansas Supreme Court, and we can certainly listen to your concerns, and maybe you, if we have concerns about that decision, you can take that up with the legislation, but this body is forced to follow state and court decisions. So that's all I have.
Just one follow. If it is within Richardson, and our only decision that we can make is to accept, what is the role of the commission?
Well.
Well, just what is, what is our role for this particular, I get the second vote on the advanced grading. I guess I don't understand if there's no vote to be taken, then what?
Well, I, I, that's absolutely correct. I do think, when you look at public safety, health, and welfare, and I'm sure the public is going to talk a great deal about public safety, health, and welfare, but we, when we look at Richardson, the court decided that when we made those, all public safety, health, and welfare requirements were met. They looked at it for traffic. They looked at it for public safety, health, and welfare. Now, I know the public can get here to talk about traffic, but if it meets the minimum ordinance, then the court will consider that as one of the things that we looked at when we made our, our subdivision ordinance. So I guess, what's your role when there's a Richardson? I think you listen to the public. You look at the preliminary plat information that I've provided you. If there's something in that requirements that comes up in your mind, and you say, wait a minute, we're talking about the stormwater drainage analysis. I think it's fair that the commission can ask Mike additional questions based upon public comment, or if it says something involving the vicinity map public brings up. I think you have the authority to further investigate those requirements that are listed in this document.
We could, we could vote any way we wanted. It would, however, a circuit court will be bound by Supreme Court.
Yeah, you cannot vote. Now, you could, for example, if you find out that you think that the stormwater drainage analysis needs to be more in-depth, then you can defer, but this, this, this body, once, they've met those minimum standards, and we have to rely on staff. There's no discretion.
But what would happen? Would we be liable for anything should we deny?
I'm sorry?
Would there be any liability to commissioners if we?
Well, no, not you as personally, because you're protected, but it would certainly open the city up for liability and this commission for acting arbitrarily, and that's why we're making this record very clear, because I suspect there's going to be a lot of questions and some anger, but the public needs to know what we are guided by.
Hey, Sean, a question about that, since we're looking at the manner in which we review flats. I'm looking at a broader authority. The planning commission is, isn't statute as we look at orderly growth. You know, it's not just health and safety and welfare. And so if I have a concern that this, I have an issue with that, even though they meet certain plat standards, how do I, how do I look at my, my opinion about that?
Well, that is a great question, and that's what the planning, this is what Richardson is all about, because the planning commissions, one of the commissioners basically substituted their own discretion and came up with something called marginal development, and the commissioner said, well, we don't want this. This is marginal development. And so the court's ruling was, y'all have no authority to look at anything. Once the minimum standard is set, for example, this commissioner said, I'm disapproving this project because it's marginal development, or you might say, well, you know, the health, safety, and welfare is an issue here. The traffic is an issue here, but it's not because it met the minimum standard, and we're stuck.
So those broad authorities given to us in other cases, applications and zoning, we cannot invoke as our own vote if I have an issue with, this violates orderly growth thing.
When it comes to preliminary plats.
Uh huh.
It is very, I mean, when it comes to preliminary plats, if they meet the minimum standard, now, this is only involving the preliminary plat.
Right.
You're only approving the preliminary plat. You're not approving the final, not approving the future drainage, what the final project is, we still have control over.
Yeah.
This is just a preliminary. We've set the standard of what's required in preliminary. Staff has said what those requirements are, and once they meet them, there's no discretionary authority to deny it. That doesn't mean it's the end of the project. There's a lot more to do with this. There'd be a lot more staff input. Any other questions?
Okay, counselor, thank you. Appreciate that. So as you can hear, this is going to be a, it's a, it's a good experience for us all to kind of walk through this. What Attorney Overton just explained is what the rules are. So this body is bound by that. Again, this is simply a preliminary plat that we're looking at. Developer has met the requirements. They're not asking for a variance. They're not asking for anything that this body at this stage has a legal authority to do. So we certainly want to hear the concerns that are here. We want to hear from the developer. Conversation is important. Due process is important. So that's what we are going to be doing. I will remind both sides, there's a total of 20 minutes for presentations. Hopefully, we've got our stop clock because we've got plenty of people that want to talk this evening. So the developer will be asked first, public will be asked second to come up, make comments. If you can be brief, please be brief, so as many folks can comment that would like to. If you've got kind of redundant comments, just to consider that maybe whether or not that's something that needs to be added, so that as much information can be presented, as Attorney Overton said, there will be down the road. As this project continues to develop, there will be additional requirements to, for approval and additional times for additional comments on the whole project. So with that, is the applicant present? Okay, if you could approach the podium, state your name and share with us your thoughts.
Yes, sir. Joe White, representing Rick, Rick Ferguson and his family. I love the new location, by the way. You know, we've kind of been here before on the Richardson case. We, I say that because when something comes up that has a lot of controversy with the neighbors, we work with staff closely, both planning and public works, to make sure that we meet all the requirements. I mean, to the point of going down the list of the requirements and making sure that everything that is asked for is on our plat, and that's what we've done here. You know, I don't want to go a long time here. I know it's, it's, it's already going pretty late, but you know, looking at this development, I want to talk about density. People, the neighbors, we met with them for an hour last week. They're concerned about lots that are 50 by 120 feet deep. They meet the minimum standard. Think about, think about that, the lots. That's a similar lot that you might see in the Heights, in Hillcrest, in Chenal Valley. They're developing 50-foot wide lots today. These are very typical, and what we're doing is we're taking these 50-foot lots and clustering them and keeping green space. And I don't know, Mr. Moore, if you have that slide available. It's the color drawing that I sent. I think it's, I think it makes a big impact on what we're doing here. You can see how much green space we're, there it is. Thank you very much. So as you look at that, we've drawn the lots in sort of that reddish pink and the green space that you see, that's 551 lots on 160 acres. In rough math, that's about 3.3 lots to the acre. Typically, when we do 60-foot wide lots, we get four lots to the acre. When we do 50-foot wide lots, we get five lots to the acre, and that was one of the things that we talked to the neighbors about when we met last week, was this is not a dense development. This is, we could go up to six, six lots to the acre, but this is 3.3. They raised a question about additional lots, because as you look at that drawing, we show future development in three locations, kind of two to the north and one to the right. The reason we don't have lots drawn in there is that property is so steep, and you could never put the 50-foot lots on it. Now, at some point in the future, could we go up there and maybe do some one-acre lots? Yes, we'd have to come back here and get it approved. We'd have to meet all the minimum standards. Even at that, if we put another 50 lots, we would still be under the four lots to the acre, and so this is not a dense development. Want to talk about traffic? The neighbors were concerned about traffic, and we, and we really did try to meet with them and hear what they had to say, and there was a lot of great questions. I guess, I'm guessing there was maybe 50 people there. We met for an hour and answered questions. When you look at the master street plan, Colonel Miller, which comes, we're lined up with Colonel Miller going south. That's our entrance. It goes down to baseline. Colonel Miller's an arterial street. Baseline is an arterial street. You turn left, and you go down to Stagecoach Road, and there's a traffic signal there. And so you're able to go any direction if you go, if you go there. You, you, you've taken two arterial streets, go a signalized intersection. If you turn out of this, out of this development and go east on Crystal Valley, you end up again on Stagecoach at a traffic signal. And so in my opinion, the traffic is going to, is going to be handled very well here. I mean, we are not creating a traffic problem. The streets that exist today are set up well, and I think that's why staff did not see a problem with this. So trying to work with our neighbors. We had a gentleman that lives, oh, just on the west side, left side, kind of mid, midway up, and he, he talked to us. He lives there. He's got a wife and kids, and they're out in the yardlot, and he said, you know, could y'all possibly look at increasing the buffer? What you see now is a 20-foot wide buffer. You can, you can just see it running all the way up the west side, and we decided to work with Mr. Whitty, and we, we are going to try to increase that buffer up to 50 feet and keep a stand of trees, and truthfully, that's a good thing for our development, too. I mean, we really want this to be a user-friendly, kid-friendly. You can see all the green space. We're going to have a little park area in the upper right, so we're, we, we, we listened to what he said, and we tried to adjust and meet some of their requests, and that was one that we felt like was a reasonable request. So, and, and truthfully, it helps our lots, too, to have a 50-foot buffer on, on that west side. That's the west. In the afternoon sun, we're actually going to have some shade trees there, and so it's a positive thing for us. You know, I go back and say, we meet all the requirements. We've worked with staff closely. Staff supports our, our development. I'd like to reserve my time and answer any questions that the neighbors might have. Thank you.
Okay.
Are any questions that you have right now?
Quick question from Mr. White. The 50-foot buffer you're talking about, is that an official amendment to your application? And is that going to run the entire, or south length of the development, or how, how do you want that to work?
What we talked about. We've actually got some 50-foot width over there already. You know, I hate to say dead-on 50. We talked about 40 to 50 feet. Why don't we say, why don't we say 40, and we'll try to get to 50? Is that, that fair?
The record will show Mr. White amended the application accordingly.
You know, for the record, we need to make this very clear, that you're willing to, you want to amend your current application to allow for a 40-foot buffer?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And, and.
Thank you.
One, one other note, this is the applicant's proposal to do this. There are no buffer requirements between two single-family developments.
Gotcha, okay.
And again, we're, we're, we just are trying to get along with our neighbors. Thank you.
Okay.
To get along with the neighbors?
No.
And you're not under arrest to do that, right?
Counselor, thank you for protecting us all. Okay, all right, so. So with that, let's see, I've got cards, I've got people in line. We're going to start with the first card I've got here. First name I've got is Ray Hanley. And let me remind you that 20 minutes total for all opposition, so. Okay, the gentleman here, okay, gentleman here, if you could approach the podium, state your name.
Good afternoon, Little Rock Planning Commission. Thank you for allowing us to come before here. I'm David Whitty, the individual that was referenced by Mr. White. We're thankful for this opportunity. I'm the first Vice President of Plantation Acres, which is the property on the west side of the proposed development. And I also own one of the bordering properties right up against the new development. First, I do want to thank Rick and Joe. Thank you so much for the conversations that we've had a week ago Thursday. We really appreciate that. The conversations, especially with Rick, that I've had. He has been gracious in working with us, and I just really want to thank you for that. One thing I want to point out, just based on what Mr. White just said, that I want to set kind of the precedent in the beginning of this, is that he mentioned this is similar to the Heights and Hillcrest and Chenal. This is entirely different. And I hope we can make that point to you as we go through here. Do we have the slideshow? That we sent in?
Yes, the slideshow is being loaded right now.
Okay, is it possible that we can view it? If you could go to the next slide, please. Okay, we, the three associations bordering the proposed property are not against the development of this property. We certainly recognize all Americans' freedom to utilize their property how they desire. However, we do have some grave concerns with the current proposed plan for development. And when I say "we," I do not make this as an unsupported claim. That's just me speaking. We have signed petitions from 98% of the residents of Plantation Acres and 96% of the Sienna Lake residents, supporting this presentation and especially the issues of disparity in lot size and home size between the proposed development and the two neighborhoods that currently border on the west and on the east. In addition, I just want you to be aware that I was told we've got over 100 people in the excess rooms over here in support that sign these petitions that we handed out to all of you from our neighborhood associations and our residents. If you could go to the next slide, please. First, we want to show you an aerial view of the proposed development and the two neighborhoods on the west and east sides, namely Plantation Acres to the west and Sienna Lake to the east. The proposed development is marked CVT, Crystal Valley Trails, and is currently a completely forested plot of land. There are 11 properties in Plantation Acres that directly border the proposed Crystal Valley Trails and seven on Crystal Valley Road. Next slide, please. Our first grave concern with the current proposed development is the disparity between its, the lot size and the home sizes of what's proposed and in between our two neighborhoods. Currently, this is all Pulaski County land, developed with larger lots and with great preservation of the natural environment. The proposed land is identified in red on the map and will have to be annexed into the city of Little Rock. Clearcut with a grading variance, requiring extensive city services for 551 new houses, totaling around 1,100 new residents. The burden this will place on fire, police, sewer, and water, in addition to a lack of recreational access for children of this development, is concerning to our residents. And currently, we've been told that there is no response from the city water or sewer regarding this project, which we find a concern also. Next slide, please. In accordance with the preliminary plot document posted on the Little Rock Planning Commission website, staff wrote on page seven, the subdividing, and I quote, "The subdividing of this property should have no adverse impact on the surrounding properties." "We humbly ask you to take a look at the drastic disparity, as shown on the map up there, between a $1.03 million property on five and a half acres and additionally, other, other properties that are at 3.6 acres, 1.8 acres. And all three of those properties up along the line have that acreage. And you can see the values from this, provided by a Little Rock Realtor, of the current values of these properties." "The red line, so you can see over on the right side, is what it's going to look like to have five, four, five, 50 by 120 lots up against a current property in Plantation Acres." And so we just want to highlight the, the impact that this is going to have in a property where everybody in this neighborhood has between 1.8 acres and five and a half. Property values are drastically going to be impacted in Plantation Acres. And again, I want to highlight the petitions that we had. 98% of our residents signed on to the fact that their properties were going to be drastically affected by this new development. Next slide, please. "The purpose of this overlay is to give you a visual of just how many houses will be going up against the Plantation Acres property and the actual acreage of each lot in Plantation Acres. And we just want to show visually the incompatibility of what this is going to be like for residents that currently moved out to Plantation Acres to have land, to have a life that's more rural. And now, you know, up against them will be 551 houses next to them." Next slide, please. "Additionally, to the east, the residents of Sienna Lake, we also obtained 96% of these residents in that neighborhood to sign the petition agreeing that their properties would also be impacted by this development, given that their properties range in value from $254,000 to $451,000 on lots that are a third of an acre." Very similar in a lot of the values of these homes to Plantation Acres. And again, right between them will now be $150,000 houses on 6,000 square foot lots. Next slide, please. "So where does this incompatibility disparity argument find depth and legitimacy? Little Rock City Code Division 2 Residential District, Section 36251, states that the purpose of zoning, and I quote, "is to promote the most desirable use of land and building development, to protect the character of each district and its sustainability for particular uses, and to conserve the value of land and buildings," end quote. "We, the associations of Plantation Acres, Sienna Lake, and Crystal Valley, are requesting that a study be done to effectively look at how this development will impact the value of all of these residents' land, given the incompatibility." At this point, I want to turn over the presentation to Ms. Melody, partially, to discuss flooding.
Good afternoon. Have the next slide, please. Another issue our group is very concerned about is the environmental impact of this development, particularly the clearing of vegetation and subsequent flooding. And this, as you've seen before, is the preliminary plot, and it runs north and south, with the top of the slide being the northern boundary. And on the map, you would be able to see the engineer's notes as far as the elevation of the land. And at the very top, it goes over 470 feet. And there is a slope to the land as you approach south. As you enter the land at Crystal Valley, the elevation has dropped to 340 feet, which is a drop of over 130 feet. Also, in the very top of this plot, you can see the little tiny topo map, and there is a very steep terrain, as Mr. White had already mentioned. The current topo of this map, as I mentioned, is a gradation, but it is also covered in old growth trees. This land has not been harvested of the vegetation since the early 1970s. So there are currently old growth trees. The developer has actually stated to us last week that he plans on clearing all vegetation and to not plant any trees back in this development, that it would be the responsibility of each landowner to plant trees. Okay, have the next slide, please. This is the current Pulaski County flood hazard map that's on our webs, on the county website. And I brought this for you to see the street values. At the top of the map, running east and west is Crystal Valley. And then going south off Crystal Valley is Colonel Miller. The pink area is Haw Creek, which is the creek that is directly south of the development.
Excuse me, Commissioner and Ms. Melody. I would like to note that 10 minutes has elapsed on the 20 minutes allotted to opposition. 10 minutes has elapsed on the allotted 20-minute time for the opposition.
Got it. Oh, you've got to have 10 minutes?
You have 10 minutes remaining.
Oh, okay, good, okay. But as I, as I mentioned, the pink is Haw Creek. And it does not go into the proposed development. However, it is directly south of the development and comes in on the west side of the development. You will see the pink area is the normal flood level of Haw Creek. However, the blue level, as identified in the key to this map, is the 1% annual chance of flooding on the Pulaski County map. Haw Creek goes through a livestock farm, then traverses through Eagle Hills Golf Course, and subsequently dumps into the Fish Creek watershed. Next map, please. This is the current FEMA National Flood Hazard Layer map for this area. It was last updated in October of 2020. In the light blue area, you will notice this is highlighted Haw Creek again, with Crystal Valley running east and west, and Colonel Miller runs due south off of Crystal Valley. The tiger striped area is Haw Creek again. However, the light blue area is the flood plain, as determined by the latest FEMA flood study, which was completed in 2015. Next slide, please. You'll notice on this map that the area of flooding does go north across Crystal Valley Road into the development that we are discussing now. It does not go all the way up into the development because the demarcation line states this is the end of the study, the current FEMA study. So there has been no current flood study in this area, as documented by FEMA. So we already know that flooding can occur in this area directly. With the removal of trees on 105 acres, and I'm not counting the future development, with the removal of that vegetation, the elevation drop of 130 feet, combined with replacing the green vegetation with concrete and asphalt, does this not increase the risk of flooding and subsequent soil erosion? And what would happen if we had a flash flood during the construction phase? All of the top soil would then go into Haw Creek and go flood through the golf courses and into Fish Creek. We believe that a closer look, if not a environmental impact study on flooding and soil erosion, needs to be done before approval of this plan because we believe that this, there is a definite safety issue. And I want you to remember the 1% blue area on the county map. Next slide, please. This tweet went out two years ago from our Pulaski County government, notifying people in our area that Pulaski, that Crystal Valley and Colonel Miller roads were closed because the road was flooded. Next slide. And we even made the Channel 7 weather that night. This is a, this is a picture of Crystal Valley looking west. On the right side, you'll see the floodwater coming directly off the land, the proposed development land. It is flush with Crystal Valley. In fact, it was a foot over Crystal Valley and also running off on the left into the agricultural line. Thank you.
Next slide, please. "So we are indeed concerned about Crystal Valley Road. It is a two-lane windy country road with several dangerous turns, one of these being circled on the map in front of you, a quarter mile down from where this proposed development is supposed to go in. And we just want to show you how close this turn is where we've had many accidents before." Next slide, please. "And more specifically, in accordance with traffic, we estimate an additional 1,100 cars daily on Crystal Valley as part of this development, with two very dangerous 15 mile per hour turns, the one that I showed you on the map before, which is that blue circle on top, and there's one just another quarter mile south of that. Many accidents have occurred here. We're concerned about the number of cars and school buses that will be going through these windy roads. We are indeed requesting a traffic study be conducted for the safety of all residents in the area." Next slide, please. "So not long ago, the Little Rock Planning Commission and the City Board of Directors contributed to an adopted, a neighborhood action plan for this area that we're talking about. And those are the resolutions that your, your commission and the Board of Directors passed." Next slide, please. "And in your adopted vision statement, you said, as a commission, or that you adopted, 'Our vision includes the preservation of the green spaces and site barriers with which our area is richly blessed and development sensitive to the natural environment, which has drawn many of our residents to this area,' end quote. We believe a clear cutting for this proposed neighborhood due to the 1,250% increase in density of the area, given the 551 lots, compared to the surrounding area that are our large lots, will drastically impact green space and site barriers. And in turn, this will affect individuals seeking property anywhere near this development and thus our property values." Next slide, please. "Finally, these are the property owners' requests from the three associations that I stand here representing today and the near 100% of residents that signed the petitions that you have in front of you, which state these issues that we've gone through already. We are asking for a study to look at how to reduce the disparity in property values between Crystal Valley Trails and Plantation Acres and Sienna Lake. Second, we request an environmental study to look at the flooding and erosion that Melody spoke about. And third, we request a pre-development traffic study to see what impact the development will have on traffic and safety. Given this is an R2 development, they have, as staff said, they've met the minimum requirements on this. We are asking you to look at how this is going to impact the area. And I want to take you to the quote that we have at the end there. This was from that action plan I just spoke about a minute ago that the Planning Commission and the Board adopted. This is speaking about this area. "Our natural geography, low-lying area, plentiful creek beds, high water table, and wetlands precludes piecemeal design of drainage systems with each new development. A study should be conducted and made available to developers as a reference on impact of excavation and fills on surrounding property and natural drainage ecology." "We, we believe that this development is indeed going to drastically affect all of our neighborhoods. And that is why so many of the residents of these neighborhoods have signed on to agree that we need..."
Excuse me, Commissioner and Mr. Whitty, you have two minutes remaining.
That we need to have further study before this development goes forward. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak before you, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to quickly go through some of the cards we have. We are at two minutes. I am going to add an additional five minutes. I am going to add an additional five minutes because there was quite a presentation, I think an important presentation. We've got quite a few folks. So I'm going to go through the cards pretty quickly. Again, if you've got comments, if it's redundant, consider not making those comments and deferring to someone else that may have something that is different, if that's okay. So I've got Richard Todd. Please come to the podium, state your name.
Richard Todd, I'm President of Plantation Acres. I agree with the original drawing. If you put up- Mr. White's original, where he's showing the retention pond. I agree with him on the retention pond. But since I live just to the west of that- You can't see it in that case. Well, anyhow, he has two retention ponds. Show his next slide. There you go. See your retention pond down there? We agree with that. Except that the, in reality, right now, the first 12 lots down there are underwater when it rains. It'll be underwater there, too, unless they catch all of it. And the reason is it comes across from the west, down to the bottom down there, or to the east, I'm sorry. And so what we're saying is we're not against the development. What we're against is traffic, 1,100 housed, 1,100 people, and 550 rammed into 60 some odd acres, which in reality turns out to be somewhere around six houses to acre. To the lot, to the acre, yes. Those are the green space up top.
Okay. Let's see, next name, it has Donald McCollum. Donald McCollum?
Sir Donald McCollum. He is basically with Sienna Lake, here to represent Sienna Lake. Mr. White has just about all the points that we wanted to make. The one thing that I would like to talk about is just the traffic. Ever since we moved there in the Sienna Lake area, certain times of the day, the traffic has already backed up, almost past the first curve from Crystal Valley. And so there were bill fits connect with Crystal Valley. And I can only imagine what another 500 houses, to include at least 700 more residents, would do. It's time to try to get our children to school. That's definitely something that we oppose, and just wanted to make that concern come in about traffic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next name I have is Walter Burgess. Walter Burgess.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm speaking on behalf of Tom Burgess, who lives immediately to the west of this subdivision at number nine Bell Meadow. He recently had surgery and asked me to speak on his behalf. I'm also a former resident of this neighborhood. I know it well. You know, there's a number of challenges put in front of the Planning Commission. This is a really good one. I respect the judgment of Richardson. That is statutory law, but it's not the only option that's available to the Planning Commission. Additional studies tabling the issue are also well within your purview. One of the primary goals of the Planning Commission, you guys know this, you're not going to learn anything new from me, but highest and best use is a good term to think about. No one is objecting to a development in this area. But is this the highest and the best use for this piece of property? You have rather nice homes where people have deliberately moved out of the city. They didn't want to be in Little Rock. They didn't want to be adjacent to Little Rock. And they moved intentionally out of the city limits. So without their consent, of course, Little Rock has that opportunity to encroach, or I forget the legal word, annex, into the part of the city. So, you know, that's not really the residents' desire. The disparity in home values is also a major concern. But also, the Planning Commission manages development. You know, we see graduations in Planning Commission from heavy industrial to residential. That's just the tenet of what a Planning Commission does. Well, this is a similar situation where you have very high density up against low density. It is within the Commission's purview to manage and to regulate that. So we'd like the developer to think about maybe larger homes. That was presented to them in the meeting last week. They didn't talk about that, but the residents did have that request. And there is math that supports the-
Excuse me, Commissioner and Mr. Burgess. Two minutes remaining.
So there is a solution here. It's not a lose-lose or a win-win. Larger houses do generate more revenue, and they would be more in tune with what's already in the neighborhood. I'll be happy to take any questions, or I'll yield my time to someone else.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I'm going to go online. And we've got several folks. I'm going to just read names as quickly as we can. Again, if you do have something that's redundant, maybe just defer your time to someone else. Let's see, first name I've got, it's Stuart Mackey. Stuart, are you online? Okay, okay. Damon Brown?
Miss Chair, on your list, you only had one person-
Oh, I see it, okay. Oh, my mistake. Okay, good, Dana Gonzalez. Oh, Dana Gonzalez, okay, just had it, okay. Okay. Let's see, I've got, I'm going to go back to the in-person cards. Tammy Johnson? Tammy Johnson? Oh, Diddy, oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, it's Dana Gonzalez.
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay, we can hear you, yes, please.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes, I'm Dr. Gonzalez, and my father and I, Jim Barber, own three pieces of property on Crystal Valley that will be affected by any flooding. They're currently affected by that flooding now. And we're very concerned by the lack of information or storm study that's been done prior to, hopefully, you won't approve it, but approving this development. I thoroughly agree with everything else that was said, but I do have a question for the Planning Commission. When asked about the storm drainage report, is there a standardization for what is normally required in a storm report for development of this size?
Mike, would that be a question for you possibly? Okay.
Yes, this is Mike Hood with Public Works. There is a number of things spelled out in the different ordinances that govern the development of subdivisions regarding stormwater. Yes, that's true. It regulates things like detention ponds and controlling the release of runoff because of the added construction of new homes and streets in the area. It covers considerations of overflow paths, like when a bad or severe storm would occur. Where will the water overflow and directing it away from, you know, structures and other improvements? How much water is running on and off the subdivision? The general location of drainage ways and the extent and size of them in their preliminary form? So there is a number of things specified about that.
And that, that's what we don't have for this development?
Well, no. I think that we have quite a bit of information about the drainage. Shows the amount of run on and runoff coming on to the side amongst other things, the flow path of the drainage through the area, where the detention ponds will be located, some of the major drainage structures that will be provided with the development. In this case, all the water is flowing south towards the road from both sides and from the hill above it.
But isn't that different from what was stated earlier, that it will be finalized later?
There's a lot of engineering details to be worked out. Final sizing of pipes, you know, exact layout of streets and inlets, and a number of other things that go into preparing the final things that go into a construction permit.
Correct. And that, that, that's what we're all getting at. There is a severe, there's flooding there every year, and none of that has been taken into account, nor has it been taken into account what that flooding or potential erosion and runoff will do to those of us that still use well water in the area.
Well, keep in mind that this is a preliminary plat, and those standards, you know, are the preliminary standards. There's a number of things that go in after a preliminary plat is approved to actually have it go to construction. And I believe, you know, later, we can call on the developer to go into some of what their plans and their considerations are for the future also. But, you know, there is information about the drainage on a preliminary plat, as there should be, and I believe in this instance, it'll be adequate.
Okay. I also had another question. So has anyone really considered the number of accidents that currently occur and near accidents in both of those curves that are mentioned? The proposed development, there are currently trucks that use Colonel Miller and can barely make that turn. They can't make the turn down, further down on Crystal Valley. And there are two blind spots, which those have not been taken into account either when you say that what is there is sufficient. It's not. There are accidents there all the time. And adding 1,100 additional vehicles on that road, it cannot handle that capacity. I yield my time.
Okay, Mr. Hood, any response to that particular comment?
We have not done any accident study on this Crystal Valley Road, and it would be unlikely that we would consider an accident study for the development of an R2 subdivision in an area that's extensively platted and planned to be a residential, single-family area. You know, just about everything around this area is owned R2. And Crystal Valley Road is not ideal, I would admit. Crystal Valley Road does have some pretty sharp right-hand turn lanes that follow old property lines. Anybody who's driven can see that, and it's pretty obvious. But Crystal Valley is also classified as an arterial street. And, you know, the city has made plans in their master street plan that someday this will be an arterial street with multiple lanes. It'll have improvements, and it will bear a very large traffic volume because it would be expected that area would completely develop at some time in the future. And that's just as we've seen so far. All along Crystal Valley, we've seen little by little by little new subdivisions being built and developed all along Crystal Valley from its intersection with Baseline Road. And someday, that road will be improved. It will come in the future, and it's part of the plan. I might also point out that, in fact, Little Rock has its own publicly funded project to make some improvements, starting at Baseline Road coming out this direction. It will not make it all the way to this development, but these things are going to happen over time as it's planned to happen.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hood, thank you. I've got two more cards. I'd like to go ahead and let these last two comments come in.
About a half minute remaining.
Okay, all right. Christopher Stell? Christopher Stell? Mind you, we've got a very short window, so if you could be as brief, but be detailed as you can.
My name is Christopher Stell. I'm a licensed architect. I've worked with white daters before. I know their abilities. Let me just say, if you have a plat where you print it on the paper, and we can't read one word of it, and you expect us all to go for that, the Planning Commission needs to update their standards.
Thank you, okay. Larry Welch? Okay, we appreciate your comments. Okay, that's all of the green cards that we have, all the comments that we have. Commissioners, or I'm sorry, the applicant, would you like to come forward? And you've got some time remaining.
Couple of quick minutes, just to cover some things.
Absolutely.
Maybe some misunderstanding, just with Ms. Parsley. We are not going to clear all the trees on the development. The areas you see that are green, we're going to maintain trees. We want the trees. We think it's great for the kids. The flooding, that same night, Shannon Show Boulevard behind the Bank OZK headquarters went, the water went over at three feet deep. It was a, it was a five inch rain in an hour. And when that happens, we have drainage structures around town that can't handle the volume, and that's one, and this is one. I'm hopefully, with our stormwater detention, we can actually help their flooding problem. I mean, this is a chance to help them, so. You know, erosion, we have to, we have to have a SWIP. It's a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan on every project. We file it with ADQ. We follow that closely. It's a requirement. They check on us, make sure we're not letting silt run off the site during construction. So I think all the points they're raising are good points, and we're going to take care of those. And it was a good point made, Mike Hood made a point while ago about, you think about, when I grew up in Leewood, Highway 10 was a two lane road. Today, it's a five lane road. We're actually going to widen our frontage, the entire link, to an arterial standard. And so you get a huge benefit from this development going in terms of infrastructure, and the city projects maybe can fill in the gaps over time. So, you know, just one more thing. And I, and I thought about this, and I, you know, Sienna Lakes, 80 foot lots, $300,000 houses. Plantation Acres, two to five acre lots, those houses are 500,000 plus. Not everybody can afford that. We'd like to give some people that want to live in this area a home that they can afford. We're talking about $200,000 homes. I mean, these are going to be nice, three bedroom, two bath, two car garage homes. Brand new construction. I think people will like living here. These are the kind of people that might move into these houses, and over time, as they work and kids grow, and they might want to move to Sienna Lakes. And then at some point, they might want to move over to Plantation Acres. I mean, it's very much like a Chenal Valley, if you think about it. We have a variety of neighborhoods with a variety of home sizes that allow people to, over time, as they work and their kids grow and they grow, can move around and move up. And so there's nothing unusual about this development going within this area. And I would say to you that probably when Plantation Acres went in some, I don't know, it was 20, 20 plus, I think, years ago, the people around them that owned 80 acres and 40 acres probably thought Plantation Acres was pretty dense. So there's just a variety of densities and a variety of developments, and that's what you get with a city. So there's something for everyone. That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Sean, has the application for annexation been filed yet? For this area, annexation?
Couldn't hear the question.
So obviously, this subdivision is dependent upon city water and sewer, and that would require it to be part of the city at some point. Is that correct?
That's correct. And there's been some discussion. I thought I saw on one of the- Before this site can be finally developed.
That's correct. Before any permits be issued for any development, annexation will need to occur.
Okay.
And just for the record, I did receive a late, I did receive a late comment from Little Rock Water Reclamation, and it's just, it's one of those pretty standard comments. It's sewer main extension with easements will be required for this property. Upsizing of receiving lines may be required. Preliminary engineering report is required. There's just, they're standard comments. I did have a discussion with Mr. Hotho, who is the Engineering Manager with Wastewater, and he did say that service would be provided. It would just be at the cost of the developer.
I have two questions. One is for the applicant, actually. Something called my ear that you said a moment ago, which is there's nothing unusual about sort of these different densities next to each other. And remind me what the proposed density is of this development? How many households will there be?
Mr. Ron, it's 551 houses are what we're showing today. And on the 168 acres, it's just under 3.3 lots to the acre.
And the adjacent developments, do you have the rough number?
No, not exactly. But I would tell you, on 80 foot wide lots, you're probably going to get, Sienna is probably 0.25 to 3 to the acre. Obviously, Crystal Valley's two to five acre tracks, totally different type development. But R2 allows up to six units to the acre. We're just over half that. And so when you look at- And so when you look at the amount of green space that we're keeping, while the homes are clustered, that it's not a very dense development.
Well, and my next question, I promise this is not rhetorical, but are you aware of anywhere else in the city where there's the 560 home development next door to one that's sort of similar to the other?
Yes. If you go out to, brand-new, right across from Chenal Downs, which are all five-acre homes, directly across Canis is a new development called Fletcher Ridge that Chenal is doing, and they're, those are 50-foot lots.
My second question is for staff. I'm confused a little bit with separating out the preliminary plat approval from the variance. Can you explain to me, is the variance not varying the basic requirements of the preliminary plat?
No, it is not. The variance that's requested is from the, from the land alteration ordinance and not the subdivision.
Totally separate ordinance.
Totally separate.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would follow up on Commissioner Ramon's comments. We've been plating subdivisions with that kind of density in the fringe areas, such as the controversial one on Canis. I mean, this is part of the pattern, you know? We don't have the luxury of the city board preparing fringe areas of saying, you know, newer development patterns are coming in with a little more density on top of large lot zoning. And we can't, we can't ensure large lot zoning. That's exclusionary zoning, and that's illegal. So I want to say that at the beginning. It's unfortunate. The city board doesn't give us any touchstones, didn't pay the ground for us, and that's why they pay us the big bucks, to talk about a little denser development for city growth.
Hey, Commissioner Barry, any, any other comments, commissioners? Okay, hearing done, we actually have two actions. First one is a consideration of the preliminary plat. Oh, if I can get a motion?
I move that we approve file number S-1898, together with all the proposed plat and file number S-1898, together with all staff comments and conditions, including the recommendation of approval.
Okay, we have a motion. How about a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call vote, please.
I'd like to recuse myself from this vote, please.
Want to recuse them?
Aye.
Phil Benton?
Aye.
Derek Brooks?
Aye.
Scott Hamilton?
Yes.
Todd Hart?
Yes.
Aron Hayes?
Yes.
Robin Ramon?
Yes.
Diana Thomas?
Pay for oil change for a year. I sure did. Okay, what's this thing? You know me, okay. People come, they bring home depot, car, $50,000, $100,000, whatever, boom.
Commissioner Thomas, can you hear us?
Home warranty, termite policy, you paying your policy.
Commissioner Thomas, can you hear us? I think she's working. Oh, multitasking at its best. Okay, can we, can we go?
Okay. Michael Vickers?
Yes.
Bobby Vogel, you?
The motion passes with eight yeses, one recusal, and we'll mark Ms. Thomas down as an absent on this vote.
Or an oil change?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Sounds like the most curious. Okay, our second action item will be for the advanced grading.
Has, I'm sorry, was there any presentation on the advanced grading? Was it just part of the?
That's just, that's just part of the plat.
I would like some more discussion on that, if you don't mind. I mean, I, this is huge, 500 more acres. Does that mean it's going to be excavated, all 500 acres excavated once or excavated in phases? So I'm not sure how that's staging, Joe White.
Okay.
Mr. Barry, let me, let me answer that. With these size homes, we generally clear all the trees for a phase and grade and set up for those homes. As you look at the large slide with the green areas, we want to leave all those intact. We want to have walking trails through the woods there. We're not going to go clear 200 or 300 acres, or 200 or 300 lots. We're going to go clear a phase and work on it, and then be clearing the next phase. But we're not going to go clear for all 500 lots day one, because it's possible, I mean, this is an eight-to-10-year project. We may get into this thing two or three years, and the market may change, and we need to adjust. And so we don't want to, we don't want to get too far down the road.
That was my question. If you got to Phase Two and the housing market dropped out, you wouldn't have all those excavated. So, okay.
Yes, sir. That's right. We don't want to do that either.
Okay. Great. I move that we approve these advanced grading requests and file number S-1898, together with all staff comments and conditions, including the recommendation of approval.
Okay, we have a motion. How about a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call vote, please.
I'd like to recuse myself again, please.
Want to recuse them?
Craig Barry?
Aye.
Phil Benton?
Yes.
Derek Brooks?
Yes.
Scott Hamilton?
Yes.
Todd Hart?
Yes.
Aron Hayes?
Yes.
Robin Ramon?
Yes.
Diana Thomas? Diana Thomas? Michael Vickers?
Yes.
Bobby Vogel?
Mr. Chair, the motion passes eight, zero, one absent, one recusal.
Okay, thank you. All right. That concludes that particular item. Appreciate everyone's patience and comments this evening. Okay, commissioners, I think we have one more item that we need for discussion on Okay, all right, great.
The first item, which is what was on your agenda, is about the mobile home, I'm sorry, multifamily study. As you recall, Mr. Collins addressed you folks a few months back about a study that was brought to his attention by one of the board members out of Springfield, Missouri, and wanted to have a discussion. There is some talk about having a special meeting to have the discussion about the multifamily. So at this time, we'd like to try to agree on whether or not we want to try to have a combined meeting like our public hearings have been for, like this, where we do some in-person and some WebEx, or if we do 100% WebEx meeting to discuss this multifamily study with the commissioners. If, if it's going to be a combined meeting, there's a possibility, since the historic commission is not going to meet there in February, I mean, sorry, in September, that we could potentially use their slot, which would be the first Thursday in September. Also, September has five Thursdays, so there's a fifth Thursday that also would be open, and no border commission would have already claimed for a time slot. So if we do a combined meeting, those might be possible dates, where it's a combined in-person and WebEx. But the first thing is whether or not we do it 100% online, or if you want to do a combined, like the public hearings have been, in-person with a WebEx option.
The commissioners, any, any, any thoughts?
What sort of burden does that place on staff? I mean, I presume all this stuff has to be set up for that meeting.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's, there's a, would be some, some setup that would be required by staff beyond just our department, yes. If it's a combined meeting.
If it's WebEx, then it's much easier.
It could be, it would be just handled by staff and our department.
I'm good for either. Here, I'll, whichever one's convenient for y'all.
Yeah.
But it sounds like WebEx is a lot easier for our, obviously, setting this up every time is super difficult. I would be in favor of a WebEx or Google.
Just to be the devil's advocate, I, well, I would hope for actual business items that we want to accomplish, we could avoid what we just experienced. Like, if we're supposed to focus on things, it's easier to not focus on WebEx.
You're, you're correct. There's always that danger with a, with a WebEx. We could try to make sure everybody keeps their cameras on. That would be one way to make sure that, that everybody's hopefully paying attention. But the, and Director Collins or another staff person could also call people out when they turn their cameras off, tell you to turn your camera back on, or something like that.
My battery died. I'm really here.
But either way, it's fine with staff. Either option is fine with staff.
Walter, are you going to submit some material prior to the meetings for us to review?
Yeah. If we're through with the, with the, you should have already gotten a copy of the, of the study from Missouri, but if you haven't, we'll, we'll get that emailed out to you.
Okay. Is there a possibility of us getting other options besides just one?
I'll, I'll have to have Mr. Collins get back with you on that one. He's the one that's gathered the information.
I think that's a little bit, I've driven through Springfield recently, in the last two years, three years, and it's a much different city, and it's about a 15-year-old report, if I recall. So might help us to have at least three options, maybe to look at, that being one, maybe two others, just, just a suggestion.
Well, I'll bring that to his attention.
Thank you.
Okay, the, each of you should have, a different topic, the short-term rental. Each of you should have, should have had a draft at your, at your place. We're not asking you to have read it, because we just gave it to you. The, this is something that, the couple commissioners that have been serving on the STR committee may be aware of, because this has been sent to them before. It's been cleaned up a little bit. There's one or two minor changes from the version that was sent out last to that, that group. But we wanted to share it with the full commission and ask the full commission to look at it and get comments back. I did want to bring to the commission's attention that we did not set a cutoff date for comments from the public. We did have two meetings, one in the Panky area and one in the Hillcrest area, which were fairly well-attended by residents who had various concerns about STRs, both pro and con, for STR, and both pro and con, the draft that was, that was put out. We have received some comments, and we're still receiving comments. I want, want you to be aware of that, that the comments still are trickling in. We haven't, and we could get some more. So the, but we have not set any dates to bring this to you for a, for a hearing, or set any dates for any additional meetings with the public. But at this point, we wanted to share it with the full commission, ask you to all look at it and get us some comments, so that we can again incorporate that also into our work before we have any additional public meetings on the STR draft ordinance. That's, that's that one. The, I have two graphics in the back, if you, if you want to see them, on two other items. One, you passed a motion about doing a study on Scott Hamilton Road from Baseline to 630. We showed that to the group that is for the Plans Committee at their last WebEx meeting, but due to some problems that a couple of people had just prior to that time, it was not very well-attended. That was, that was the first time it was not well-attended. And, and so we wanted to allow all the full commission to look at the boundary and to state whether or not you felt like that was an appropriate boundary before we started really working on that. If you let me step around, I'll put that up on the WebEx, and you'll be able to see If you're comfortable with this, then this is what we'll start with for the study. The north line there is the freeway. The dash line goes to the south side. Basically, all the properties in front of Baseline on the south side would be included in this. So we'll wash over a little bit over to the south side of Baseline, and it'll include the immediate uses that back up to the uses on Scott Hamilton. So you'd have the two small residential pockets that are either side of Scott Hamilton included in, in the review also as part of this. And that large, most of that large gray area is the electric co-op property. It's on the extreme western end of, it's within the hatched area that would be in the study area. So if you, you guys are comfortable with this, this is the, this will be the area that we perceive with in working with the Plans Group Committee. And there, that committee is, is meeting the first Tuesday of each month.
It looks good. You want, you want us to?
You don't have to make a motion, just if, if, if people just, give some indication that it's reasonable. So at least so far, everybody that's given an indication has indicated that they feel like that's reasonable.
Yeah, it looks reasonable.
Yep.
Okay, there's one more map I would like to show you, and that was also brought to the Plans Committee. And that's, as you recall, we're working on the extraterritorial area to the southeast, and looking at the land use plan now with the possibility of zoning in the not-too-distant future for that area. And we met with representatives of Little Rock Port, and that group has asked us to look at adding an area to their planning boundary. Can I get one of you guys to just flip over next and hit the next button on the top, just one place over, and that'll pull up that map? You don't have to change anything, just hit the next. At the top, just hit the next top. Yeah, the next one, right next to it. No, the top, at the top. Change tab.
Tab.
The next, the next tab. The next to last tab. That one, yes. This would be the area that would be added. And so it's either side of Fraser Pike. Right now, the planning boundary only goes a quarter of a mile to the south in this area. It's the shortest distance anyplace. As you can see where the city limits is, that's where Wells Fun is, if you're aware of where that, of that facility in the port. The... The, uh, the, while we were, what, in discussions with the port, what we would do would be move to a full mile beyond the city limits in this area, which is still one of the shortest distances for the planning boundary anywhere around the city. Um, and the, the, what the hatched areas are, just, just so you know, the green hatched areas are already owned by the Little Rock Port. So almost half the, about a third of the area that we're talking about adding is, is already owned by the Little Rock Port Authority. The blue area is owned by the federal government. That's the next lock and dam in park. Uh, so it doesn't matter if it's on our jurisdiction or somebody else's jurisdiction. They're the feds and nobody can tell them what to do except the feds. So it, so that is not going to matter much, uh, from a zoning or a land use standpoint. They, that small little blue area and the red area is owned by the Keats LLC, a family group. And then the, that leaves the, uh, the larger white area in the top, which it, which half of that, the port also has an option to buy, um, that expires in twenty twenty-three. Uh, so we didn't feel like, we don't feel like this is a huge leap to add it to the, to our planning boundary. Uh, what we're, what staff is proposing to do is at your October meeting, is to bring it as an item, if, if you guys are comfortable with that. And then we can have a full discussion of whether or not to add it or not. And, and ultimately, you, you can vote no, and you, the decision could be not to add it. But at this time, that's what we're proposing would be to, would be to add this area to our planning boundary. Um, and, uh, in that meeting with, where you would be asked to, uh, vote on it would be your October meeting in two months. But again, since there was very low attendance at the plans committee, we wanted to show it to the full commission rather than just bring it, uh, without any other input.
Monty, this is the area you, that we were discussing at the meeting, that it's going to be rezoned, I.
If, if it was, the port wants everything, that'll be a later discussion, okay? But, but the port wants everything zoned industrial, preferably I three. Um, that, that they, that's in writing. They've already provided that to us in writing.
What else could possibly go there besides industrial?
Well, a lot of it's agricultural right now. So, so you could zone it ag. Uh, so we have areas that we've zoned agricultural to the west. Um, and in the, when we did the zoning, extraterritorial zoning in the nineties, we, uh, gave people the option if they wanted agricultural zoning, we would, if they gave us a legal description of their property, we would zone it agricultural, no question, um, apps. Now, we will be making the, this, we'll have, be having that discussion with the plans group, planning commission, uh, on whether or not that's a process we also use in this area. Uh, but that was a, that was a process we use in the western areas. Um, but we haven't had those discussions yet with the plans committee on what the process will be on like how we're going to do the public outreach, the meetings and all that. We've got to still discuss all that with the hands committee. So all that's still coming. Or this is, there's a lot more to come on, on this project. But the, but the, but if we're going to, if we're going to add it, we'd like to add it so that we can also take it care of it and include it in the zoning and land use that we're doing for the rest of the, the current extraterritorial area. So that's the reason to go ahead and bring it forward now so that, uh, we can incorporate it in the work where we've already started for the, for the, uh, surrounding areas. So unless there's a real discomfort with that from the commissioners, we'll bring something to you, um, in October and then you can, you can actually make, you'll have it, that's when you'll have to make a decision on whether or not, yes, this is a good thing to do or no, this is not a good. That's the last item staff has for you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I have one, uh, more quick or business. I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce you to the gentleman to my left who is doing the roll call tonight.
Okay.
This is, uh, Romy Price. He's our newest staff member, is a new development specialist, uh, started with us about a month ago. And, uh, he'll be working with you guys, this commission, as well as the Board of Adjustments. So you'll be seeing a lot more of him in the future.
Awesome. Okay, you're welcome, Mr. Price. We welcome you. Thank you. Uh, any citizen comments? Hearing none. We are adjourned.